Could we?
Shpial.
Go ahead. Let's get started.
Okay. Sorry, my little. I've got too many things up right now. Okay. All right. Okay, so good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Couple of items to go over before we officially get started. This meeting is live on Comcast, local Channel 27 and on the Pacific Coast TV's website. We have just a few in the audience this evening in attendance, and for those in attendance and/or would like to call in at some point, you are able to have the opportunity to speak. We will have the Chair open up the general public comment period for those items that are not on the agenda, and then he will also open up public comment during specific items listed on the agenda. During those times, we'll recognize the speakers by raising their virtual icon hand, and I will help to assist the public, allowing each person to speak for the allowed three minutes. If you are on telephone this evening, star six to mute and unmute, star nine to raise and unraise your hand. And then as of right now, I believe there's no public comment. If there are during the presentation, it will be talked about with our planning planner Doug. I think you guys still continuing our remote access or remote meetings, and I will hand it over to interim Chair Hernandez to officially begin this evening's meeting.
Good evening. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with the minute, oh, I guess roll call first, sorry.
Then we have a special agenda order tonight, Bridgette, so.
I'm okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and do roll call. Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
And Vice Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
And Commissioner Ruddock is absent this evening, and so is Chair Warren. So go ahead.
So Jill, I'm gonna turn over to you for a special item.
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Chair Hernandez. We are, I'm sure, as the commission staff is very excited to welcome new Commissioner Margaret Gossett, and we got all the paperwork buttoned up last Friday, so she is officially a Commissioner. But we feel it's very important to acknowledge the welcoming of Commissioner and to have the oath of office, the part of our way of having a public acknowledgement of that. And so I'm prepared. I've been dued ties by the city clerk to administer the oath of office in this case. So if Commissioner Gossett is game, I will go ahead and begin, and you can please repeat after me. Are you ready? I, Margaret Gossett, do affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Margaret Gossett, do affirm that I will defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United. Margaret, I just skipped the line. I apologize.
Okay.
Hold on. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all foreign enemies? I didn't, I'm sorry.
You're good. You're good. You're fine. I will make it shorter. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
With any mental reservation or purpose of?
Evasion.
Evasion.
And that I will well faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. You are a seated Commissioner, and we can confirm now to our Acting Chair tonight that you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Welcome to the party, Commissioner Gossett. I've heard wonderful things about you, and I look forward to your participation in our meetings as we move forward. Would love to break bread or have a cup of coffee with you at some point. So, but welcome. Really excited to have you onboard.
Thank you. I'm also excited to be onboard, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Through the chair.
Excellent. Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add my congratulations. This is one of the most rewarding jobs that I've ever undertaken, if not the best paying. And I think that you'll find it very satisfying, and I too look forward to having a good chance to sit down with coffee or an adult beverage and getting to know you. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's, that's all of us who are present here this evening. We, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There are only two of us present. What is the protocol? Actually, who were at the previous meeting, what is the protocol for approval of minutes if there's only two of us present?
Fortunately, through the chair, this just happened, I think, last meeting, so we're all familiar with it. Since this is not an action that requires a resolution, the two members who are present, there can be a motion and a second, and then as long as the two who are present approve the minutes, the action can be carried out.
Very good. Thank you for reminding us of the rules of engagement here. Commissioner Benjamin, do you have any feedback on the minutes?
Thank you. I read the minutes, and they looked right to me. It was, I thought it was very carefully laid out. Did you see anything?
Nope.
Okay, I moved it. You and I approve those minutes.
I second the motion. Get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Benjamin?
This is ridiculous. Yes.
You're telling me now. And then Acting Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion approved, two zero.
Excellent. Well, the next item on our agenda is the opportunity for public comment, as Bridgette mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So if anybody in the public has the desire to speak about any item, except for the one item that's on our agenda tonight, this is their opportunity to share their feedback with all of us on the Planning Commission and the city staff who are present. Bridgette, are there any folks in the public who have raised their hands who wish to speak?
I see no one. There's four people in the audience, and I have none.
Very good. And then I will close public comment, and I will move to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Acting Chair Hernandez. This item is 880 Stone Pine, and the Commissioners received a late communication from me this afternoon about it. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Todd Sealy to give me an update.
Thank you, Jill. Acting Chair Hernandez, Commissioner Benjamin, and newly appointed Commissioner Gossett, welcome to the team. It's my pleasure to be here with you this evening. Thank you so much for having us. As most of you know, I believe all, I've had the chance, Acting Chair Hernandez, I don't think we've had the chance to meet in person. We can change that in the future, but I am the Public Works Superintendent for the City of Halfing Bay. We are coming back with this item. We previously had a study session in August on this item. But unfortunately, Public Works is looking forward to, while we're looking forward to moving ahead with this project, on behalf of Public Works, Director John Doughty, as a representative for the applicant, we are hereby requesting a continuance to a date within the next 10 days. Staff needs more time to work through project details related to a comment letter received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Because time is of the essence, we hope that the Commissioners here this evening will be able to make a quick shift to a special meeting next week. Just wanted to let you know that we are fully coordinated with our project planner Doug Garrison, who is here with us this evening as well, who has been supporting the SEQA review process. That is essentially what we're asking for this evening, and I'm gonna turn it back over to Jill, and maybe she can follow up with a little bit more information for the, for the Commission.
Thank you, Superintendent Sealy. We just want to thank the Commission for preparing for this item. We know that you had a lot of packet materials, and we hope that that wonderful preparation will make you all the more prepared a week from now, this item, that you are available. This is an unusual circumstance. We would not normally have this condition, and we appreciate your flexibility. The recommendation in your Stafford report is to adopt an initial study and mitigated negative declaration and to approve a coastal development permit, architectural design review, and tree removal permit for the 880 Stone Pine Corporation Yard Upgrade Project. The revised staff recommendation is to continue this item to a date certain for a special Planning Commission meeting, and we are recommending Tuesday, March 29th. We have heard back from three Commissioners that this date works for you. We know that this is an off-week meeting, and we apologize. We hope that you have carved out a little bit of time on next Tuesday. In such a case, if you are to consider the Public Works Director's request, we would not conduct any other business about this item tonight. There'd be, we delay the staff presentation, public hearing, your deliberations until the next meeting. And we do request, however, you know, with all the work that you have done, and I know some of you have already reached out to staff with your questions, but if you have any more questions on this item, and you could get them to Doug Garrison on Wednesday would be lovely. Thursday would be the latest because we want to really have a full look at them and respond to them. We'll have a supplemental packet for this item going out on Friday, should this continuance be acceptable to the Commission.
So I will open the, that to my fellow Commissioners. Are there any objections to continuing the items next week?
Ladies first.
No objection. I can meet on March 29th at seven o'clock.
Me too. Earlier is also possible. I don't know if the regular time is the best time, depending on how long the item is expected to be. If it's the only item on the agenda, that's, that's perfectly fine. Is staff's preference to keep it at seven? Ben?
We, it will be the only item on the agenda, and we find that our public is most able to catch your meetings if they know what to expect. And this is already a special day, so we would recommend maintaining the time.
Right. No, that makes perfect sense. I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'm amenable, and I'm available at that date. So can I get, what do we need to do here? Do we need to make a motion, or can I just say we're gonna?
Yes, please. We would like a motion and a roll call. Thank you.
Can I get a?
Sorry, through the chair?
Yes.
Do we know if we're going to be able to improve the size of our quorum on that date, or is it unclear?
We have heard back from one of the Commissioners who's not present tonight, who is available on the 20th, so you would have at least four. It's our understanding of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Gossett, do you feel like making your first motion?
Okay, I so moved that we meet on Tuesday, March 29th at seven o'clock to discuss the Stone Pine project at 880 Stone Pine.
I'll second that.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion approved, three zero.
Through the chair, staff just wants to have the records reflect, the minutes reflect that Planning Commission motion specifically results in continuing this item to a date certain of March 21st. 2025. Our nitpicking language. Thank you.
Understood.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're gonna close that item, and the next item on the agenda would be the Planning Director's report.
Well, thank you. I, the report is going to be brief. It's been a very busy day with the City Council listening session, which took place from noon to three this afternoon. And they are queuing us up to prepare their work plan for supporting the City Council priorities for the next fiscal year. This is part of the City Council's budget allocation process. The intent is the budget supports the priorities. The priorities are projects that are really above and beyond all the work that we have to do anyway. It's kind of that thinking about how much of the iceberg is below the water. There's a whole lot of it, and that's what we have to do anyway. And then these priorities are that the bit above the water, and they're, they're really interesting and important. What you're going to see through this is more work on affordable housing. I don't think this is a surprise to you. And of course, the housing element is the unconstrained policy document that we've been working on and will be bringing through the Planning Commission within several months. And once that's complete, we will be able to move into implementation of the land use plan, as well as the housing element, because they need some of the same things. They both need that new zoning map. They both need the new land use designations turned into zoning code for rural coastal, for example, and the workforce housing overlay, and the up zones that Commission reviewed for portions of the downtown from R2 to R3, and the updates to the planned development areas that are so important. There's a lot to it. We've already been working on the implementation plan, and we will at some point come to you with a schedule. We're not, we gotta focus on the housing element first, however. Both the housing element and the implementation plan need SEQA coverage. So California Environmental Quality Act review, and I'm currently working with a contract environmental contractor, and you will see a scope of work or council if they get their next meeting to perform those contract services. And this happens to be a SEQA consultant who has experience with housing elements and current housing element, which is really challenging. Usually during the Director's Report, we like to give you an agenda forecast. Specifically, we obviously know what your next meeting is. It's a surprise, extra square on your calendar for a week from now on the courtyard. And again, we would appreciate your comments. April 12th, the first April meeting, Scott Phillips has been completing the Measure D rankings for all of the allocation requests from outside of the downtown area, and that will be all ready for you on that date. And we are hoping to bring the Parklet and Sidewalk Cafe program back to you for a public hearing on April 26th. There are a number of other projects that are getting ready for hearing, a couple of single-family homes that had some SEQA review. There's other things that are brewing, and requests for some education from, really, staff wants us to all hear some updates. For example, the building electrification ordinance has been adopted. It's in place, and John Doughty has offered to give a study session to the Planning Commission, so you have a sense of what's to come and how conditions of approval may change relative to that ordinance. The PV and EV ordinance is also adopted. And then we've been thinking about opportunities for Planning Commission training. I know we've been, we sent a few to the Commission that I just think the timing didn't work for you. It's time for the AB 1234 athletics training. Our city clerk is looking into that, and we're, I'm hoping that maybe we can do that again in some kind of joint session with the City Council. That's a requirement for the Planning Commission and the City Council. SEQA training is something that we've been talking to Doug about. He, Doug Garrison, our senior planner, is very steeped in SEQA, and he has good resources for supporting the Commission with challenging work. And if there's any other topics that come up, let me know. I'm focused on housing, and that's what I'm, that's what I do right now. So I'm happy to talk to you about that. And we don't have a lot on the horizon with the community development hearings. Bridgette, I think you could speak to the changed schedule that we've been working on with our Architectural Advisory Committee?
Yes, so tomorrow morning, we have a special date and meeting at 8:30 for AAC. And then going forward, starting in April, we'll be meeting the fourth Thursday instead of the third Thursday of each month for Commissioners, and we're gonna try that for a few months and see how that works for everyone's schedules and so forth. And then during the summer, maybe just reevaluate the times. We're just trying to squeeze in a time and a day where there's not another conflict of an evening meeting or a day meeting of another department within the city. So we're doing the fourth Thursdays from April going forward for now. Just.
Very good. I just had a quick question on that. Are there any substantial projects coming before the AAC over the next few weeks? I know that we're not encouraged to participate in those meetings, but are there big items on the agenda that we could look at or just take a gander at?
The, oh, go ahead. We, well, I was just gonna say that we post, we do post, and you can get, receive those emails, so you're aware of the projects. I don't think there's anything against looking at the projects themselves. They're posted on their website every, every time we have a, you know, every time we have a meeting. We have a couple of mixed-use projects that are coming up tomorrow. Jill can probably explain some of the other ones that are in the forecast coming up in the next month or two.
I wish I could right now. I found myself without my notes, but now, Ed, I will tell you, I want to share that I had the pleasure of meeting with Commissioner Gossett last week, and we talked about the Architectural Advisory Committee and their role as advisory to the Planning Commission, and how important that is to have that design review support and guidance. We have a commission that doesn't have any architects on it, for example, so it's really nice to have an extra group of design professionals who can help that so that you get better quality projects. I would encourage any of you who are interested in the Architectural Advisory Committee's agenda items, especially now that they're, we've been on Zoom again for a while, to just observe if you have time to do so. Typically, my experience with architectural advisory groups is they do like to meet first thing in the morning. It's kind of part of their workday. It's a working meeting for them. They collaborate. They are with each other, and frankly, with the applicant and with staff. And you're sure to always learn something new about design for sitting in for, for an hour or two with the Architectural Advisory Committee. Anybody who's in the audience and interested in receiving notifications of their meetings, we can, you can sign in very, very easily through page on the city website. And that's, thank you, Bridgette. That's what I wanted to cover on that, and just, it's timely, because it's just a great group for everybody to know.
And Jill and Winter, just to be clear, for something like the Architectural Review Committee or Advisory Committee meeting, that's something where we can observe, but are we discouraged from actually participating in those meetings? Okay, just want to get that out there. All right.
Watch and hang out. Yeah.
And we've had some Commissioners that have joined over the past year that have popped in and listened to specific, you know, project that they might be interested in or so. So I think it's, yeah, not, not participated, but dropped in to listen.
Very good. Okay. Jill, is that it for the Planning Directors?
Commissioner Benjamin's been raising his hand, sorry.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you, sir. So a couple of things. First, on the training question, there was an interesting post pointing us to the League of Cities Planning Commissioner Handbook, which I have had a hard copy of in the past, and I thought it was incredibly helpful. And I thought I could download a new copy, but it seemed like there was just hyperlinks. Is there a way to get a PDF if nothing else?
To it. Bridgette, if you could look into that, that'd be helpful.
I can do that. No problem.
Thank you. I know what, I understand what Mr. Benjamin's talking about, and I didn't want to.
Yeah, we just sent the link, and so we can, we can, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, and I wasn't expecting an answer right away or anything. I just am trying to get on top of that. And with respect to other planning, you know, I, one of the things you'll find, Commissioner Gossett, is that we can really, staff has incredible expertise in some areas, and housing and architecture and urban planning is one of them, that you will, it's a joy to work with this Community Development Director. And I try to supplement, you know, I try to bring a different perspective, just something that maybe there's not as much basic bench depth, not in her, but in all of the, across the, the whole staff, and for that matter, the Commission. And I was thinking maybe that an opportunity for training that might be a little different than what we usually do would be something that's focused on, say, hazards or some other, you know, we've got a safety element thing coming up. Maybe there's, you know, we, we're dealing with a new era with, you know, not just sea level rise, but, you know, fire season and changes, you know, all of the ramifications. And it may be that there's some good training where we can complement what we already know, what, you know, the expertises that we already have in-house, and add some value that way, rather than being, I won't say redundant, because it's always great to have somebody bringing a different perspective to something that others on the team know so well. But it just struck me that might be an approach to training that would be a little different than we've done in the past. And if it appeals, I'd be glad to go chase it.
I'm, it's not an item on the agenda, so I'm not sure we can have a discussion on it. I will say it sounds interesting.
No, I, we listened. Well, I would suggest that we bring training like that forward when we are actually on the path to start working on these documents. We have a lot of other stuff in the queue, but safety element's coming. It will come after the housing element. And so it's definitely in the hopper. And yeah, there's, there's a lot of new law that pertains to it, and there's possibly more perspective on this than any of us on the screen are. And there's possibly more perspective on this than any of us on the screen are, are really aware of. There's, there's a lot going on there.
Very good. Any other questions?
Just a heads up, well, I guess maybe it's a communication item, but there's some chance that I'm gonna be traveling in April, so I'll keep you posted. I don't have a specific date yet, but there's a good chance I'll be out of state.
Yeah, just keep me posted.
Will do.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the planning directors unless there's anything else to add or any clarifying questions. I'm gonna close the planning director's update. Okay, so Planning Commissioner Communications. I, so this is where if we have comments, questions or things we want to state, it's our opportunity to put them out in public. Do want to again, thank you, Commissioner Gossett, for joining us. Look forward to your participation in all of this. I will be traveling on the East Coast the week of April twelfth. It's college visit time for, for me. So I may be able to participate in the Measure D. Certainly sounds like an interesting thing to wake, stay up late for. So, but, but there's possibility I won't be able to make it because it will be 10:00 PM local time. So that's just my heads up to all of you to make sure that we have enough people for quorum. Anybody else have any commission, any updates?
That was just what I was gonna bring up. I know Commissioner Gossett's new. Usually this, this time is the time where I've asked Commissioners to send me an email if you know of dates of commission dates, meetings that you know you can't make due to some complex. So just let me know. Shoot me an email when you know and it's just helpful so we can forecast. Because we usually forecast a month to two months ahead on our, our agenda items. So just make sure we have a quorum.
And just, just as a point of clarification, you know, prior to COVID, we had some special dispensation that some of us who were traveling could participate as long as it was noticed. If we are traveling out of town or out of city, are there any requirements for us to do special notification for the Zoom meeting? Or are we still allowed to participate in these meetings?
We're still under, there is, oh, sorry, Bridget.
No, no, go ahead. No.
I was just gonna say there, there are still kind of pandemic laws in place that allow us to continue with the Zoom Brown Act meetings for, for the time being.
So we can participate from any location as long as we show up on time and are on video and audio during the meeting.
Yeah, and you don't need to post a sign outside your hotel room door or anything like that.
Bye, friends.
Very good. Okay. If there's no other communications from my fellow Commissioners, I'm going to ask for the final motion of the evening, which would be to adjourn our meeting. So moved. Can I get a second?
I expect in that.
All right. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Hernandez?
Yes, we almost set a record. We were off by one minute for the fastest planning commission meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, Andrew. Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.